With all due respect, Your Honor, obviously, the requirement of course of the IPMR for him to be accepted or to be to set to sit in the local legislative council is the requirements are only two: certificate of affirmation issued by the NCIP and the auto office. Since the certificate of affirmation has already been issued so you have to accept him. As to the issue on disqualification, the NCIP will resolve that because we have our process in resolving this qualification. Pending the resolution of the disqualification, the certificate of affirmation issued by the NCIP enjoys the presumption of regularity. So you have to respect that. So if ever, if ever, the NCIP finds that or found out that indeed Hapid disqualified, the possibility of that is the COA will be canceled and that's the time that Hapid will be removed. But as of now, since the COA, as I've said, enjoys the presumption of regularity, it has to be respected and you have to accept him. Thank you.
Honorable Chair, may I move for a recess?
Yes, recess for three minutes.
Honorable Chair, siguro anyway, the term of honorable Bual will end on July. So the council will act on that upon before his term ends. And as for now, we are asking the NCIP to please resolve these issues before July comes. Kaya masamok ka ayun eh. Once we accept Honorable, once we accept Haji Hapid Muhammad and na'y masamok niya, ano, kami put dire sa Legislative Council ang maoy, mahimog, daghanapong issue ani. So we must be very careful on our actions first.
Muhammad.
Yes, honorable.
Ma'am, may unutto against no. Actually, um, ma'am, pero lang matingala ko, konpesyo ko, kay I've experienced during my time, ten months ko bago ako nakasulod, ang COA is wala sa giatag. Kamu na kuyog niman pareha, direktor pareha, ku na giatagan ko ang COA during my oath taking. So in preparation, mamantoy, nako, unta ba ang affirmation? You affirm that Haji Hapid is already terminated or you affirm that he is honorable? So kung atong panahon ang affirmation, I have experience in barangay. As anito, until now, wala jod ang certificate of affirmation na si man minaw giat nagatag. So personally, sakwa, I disagree. Resolve that niya, kay kung mabawat ang sangmuyang bayan, maninulit paiko man na brought out ang issue to the sangmuyang bayan, so that the NCIP dilik dito matulirekto ang katong muhindi, and then katong mga malingko dire, is a part of pinuodod nga NCIP to solve the paper honesty, sincerely, dilik dito mo ati landre para makaditinasiya. So kana ang akwa, kay tele, atag lang ko gamay sa mama, pano update, Haji Hapid dugo na nakuyog. So I was surprised niya ni Al Jazakwa, unta ikwan, ang pero ngam, diliko, posugot dictahan. Muna akong kwan, kay gusto ko nga personal nako ang otosan da IPAS kung mahimog ani, panahon nimo ang akong magdokument, ang akong mangakumpresman, aktibman. Out of sixteen municipal IPMR in San Bonggasebukay, siguro, I proud myself ako ng akoy dokumento. The rest ba, mabawat lang upo ta andon. Anub, unta ilang ginabuhat. So namang dokumented. So andon si ikwan, si gasal, paglingkon nako ten months, kung di nexti man pareha, di doku makalingkon. Ganey, kamatok akuyog. Unsa ang dibuhatan, geresolve nako ang personally, ako ang nagresolve sa kong problema together with ni Anet ni Kwan ni Kenisa Kuen Sangdayan, di one and one namo giatuan, manay prasis, pag solve sa problemat, dilik kana tawagon pagkaoman i-dokument nga isara ang butob, isara ang maghimo, magrecap, andon, umanda yun, pres kay Bob Minden. So I have more experience about solving problem. So sa'yo lang, I support the layon situation on the table.
Um, yes, honorable.
Uh, I think the Honorable Bual is airing out his personal experience being an IPMR. We will not, uh, we will not close this one until touch that the NCIP will come up with a resolution to this matter that we are discussing now. Uh, one thing, Mr. Chair, can I request Mr. Muksin? I have something to ask on him.
Sir, Sir Muksin, you may have the floor now.
May unuto.
May unuto. Ah, mga tanan ako sa imuha, sa imuhang pag, pag historia ka ganina, ikaw ang representante sa Samal?
Yes, ma'am.
Itagaan ka o kwan sa Samal nga ikaw motindog karoon dire? In behalf sa ilaha, sa inyong tribo?
Kay ganiha manggut ma'am, wala dire ang akong mga kaoban nga sama, pero pagkakaroon, nakita na ko, nabudna.
Dini sa lungsod sa Ipil, mga tanan lang ko, ah, pila kabuo individual ha, dilik family, pila kabuo membro sa Samal, di apila kabuk Samal mo dire sa lungsod sa Ipil?
Ang unsa ma'am, ang Validated Council of Elders?
Dilik, kamu individual? Ah, pila mo kabuo, membro makakasa kwan?
Uh, more or less ma'am, mga siguro, one hundred?
One hundred mo? Ah, please take note, Honorable Madam Sekretary, ah, one hundred ka, Samal dire sa lungsod sa Ipil?
Intero na ma'am, intero.
Intero Ipil, oo. I just want to inform you that we are on live, no? Telecast, no? Live nisya? Kay basin niya na imoreak nga, basi two hundred ta tapos one hundred imonggisulti?
Kay, ah, dilik, moga neto ma'am, di ko kasiguro kung pila giat, kung one hundred ba o two hundred ba, pero more or less?
More or less, one hundred.
Pwede siya mutaas, pwede siya maubos, ano? Sa katong one hundred?
One hundred, pero dilik mula pa sa one hundred. More or less one hundred raman?
Oh, ingan-igan ma'am.
Kay, gusto ta, isa sa akong nakita, kay kani manggong complaint karoon against Haji Hapid. Da sa one hundred kabuo, wala pa mo'y ma-recommend isa? Ngadilik makaapikto sa tanan? Basin lang naaba, basinaa? Wala ninyo na kwan na sa inyong, sa inyong asosasyo, sa inyong tribo? Kay naaman ang complaint karoon against Haji Hapid. He was being removed as Panglima, he was being removed as member of the Council of Elders, then wala ba'y membro sa Samal nga tribo? Ngapwede ninyo irkomenda nga dilik mo against ang ibang mga tribo sa bakaha?
Ingan-igan manggut na ma'am, kay ako as Validated Council of Elders sa Sama tribe, so na may ka lima kabuo nga Validated. So ang nagaspirel isa kabuo, atal, lima ba? Si Al-Hapid Muhammad, so na'y ka kwan og upat si Al-Sli Muhammad, si Tatung Muhammad, si Haji Abdul Harry Chinudin, og si Panglima Merham Untong, ika unang di ako.
Dugay na na inyong Council of Elders sa Samal? Kano sa ano siya na create, naorganize?
Dugay na ni siya ma'am, pero ang nalayduhang na bagu, makasulod niya, oh, bagu.
Muna, because, Mr. Chair, we want this to be put on record, kay para at least makita na'to, ah, dilik makita ang mor resolved ani nga, ang sani problema, at least we are here, NCIP is here, IPMR, Council of Elders of this municipality is here, para at least atong madungog sila tanan, but it will end up with NCIP, no? So as what the Honorable Farida has manifested, that we will wait for the NCIP to resolve once and for all this matter. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I hope na masaptan sa NCIP, pero no, ang desisyon sa council.
Thank you, Mr. Muksin.
Um, Your Honor, can I?
Yes, you may have the floor.
Yes, um, NCIP is very willing to resolve this, ano, this particular issue, no? But sa katong, um, tribe nga nagpetition, kindly submit the, ano, the protest, please. Kasi kani inyuha bitong giingon din hinga protest. Kaning protest na inyong giingon dire nga inyuha ng nafile. Actually, it was received by the NCIP Provincial Office on September 9, 2022. Tapos it is not a protest. I hope you understand that in the National Guidelines, na atay klaro ka ayong provision ditto na ay form unsa onin niyo paghimo ang protesta. So kaning 2022 pa dilik ni siya protest, actually for information of the office lang. So we cannot resolve that, kung dilik ninyo ifollow ang girequire nga protest nga naasa National Guidelines, please understand that ang NCIP na sapod may gi-follow, na may gi-follow nga rules. Um, lantawan na lang ninyo palihoga sa National Guidelines, Title 5, Disqualification and Protest, Section 20. So nakabutang dire no, na dapat ang contents of the petition or protest, nakabutang ang name of the parties, facts, issues, specific violation or grounds for disqualification or protest, signed and under oath. Absence of any of the foregoing requirements may be a ground for dismissal. So kaning giingon ninyo nga protest nga inyuha ng gi-file ko, no? Actually, 22 pa, wala pa na select si IPMR Hapid ani. So we will not consider this as a protest. So please, if you want that protest to be resolved by the NCIP, file the appropriate complaint or protest. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Abag, you are recognized. You may have the floor now.
Thank you for the second time, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. First, on the motion and manifestation of Honorable Farida and the whole, we submit, Your Honor, and we agree to that motion that let the NCIP through the Council of Elders resolve the issue first, so that this issue may be resolved. On the petition stated by the legal officer of the NCIP, it is not a petition, ma'am. Let me be clarified with it, it is not a petition. So there is nothing to file a petition on that particular time. There is no petition. What we submit to the NCIP is a resolution. That is not a petition. That is a resolution, copies of resolution approved by the Council of Elders informing the Office of the NCIP terminating the designation and membership of the four persons, members of the Council of Elders. That is not a petition, that is a resolution. As to requiring us to submit our protest, we cannot submit yet our protest as we do not know what to protest. We have to acquire the necessary documents. We are requesting from the Office of the NCIP to punish us copies so that we can take action, legal action. But what did the Office of the Provincial Officer do? We were denied. Mr. Sagat said, we were at this office some few weeks ago. We are requesting for the documents submitted by the aspirant and yet we are denied. So how can we take legal action against this person without the necessary documents to support our petition? To support our protest? As of now, we do not have any protest. We cannot protest because we do not know what to protest. So we are requesting, uh, through this August body, the provincial officer and the acting regional officer of the NCIP, we are requesting for the documents submitted by the aspirant to please punish us. You cannot invoke the Right to Privacy Act because this is not a violation of the Data Privacy Act. You cannot invoke on your right to custody, you cannot invoke the same statement we request from your father that you have, you are not authorized to release such documents because it is not in violation of the Data Privacy Act. There are only 162 items, issues stated in the Data Privacy Act and this one is not included. So in the presence of this council, we are requesting from your good office, ma'am, to please punish us such documents because when we request from the provincial officer through Mr. Sagat, through Mr. Wahid, we were told that the documents were submitted to your office. So can we request, ma'am, copies of the documents submitted to your office? May we know if you can provide us? Ma'am? Nangayon ni ma'am sa'yo ma'am, og katong mga document nga gi-submit ma'am sa concerned person, ma'am.
You may have the floor now.
Ay, yes ma'am, we will, we will, we will. Uh, we will do that ma'am, we will do that ma'am. Yeah, I just, uh, verbally, so that this August body could witness and we will, uh, send a request letter and we hope that we will not receive the same answer just like before, that we will, we will be denied. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, second is the allegation of the previous speaker that the Council of Sama has been organized long before. It is not true. It is not true. The Council of Sama was only organized after their termination. The fact that these persons were members of the Council of Elders, inclusive of all tribes, meaning there were, there is no other Council of Elders. The fact that they are members before of the Council of Elders, but the Council of Elders of Sama was created only after the termination of these four persons. Uh, so for one hundred, as allegation that there are one hundred more or less Sama tribes living in Ipil, they even have no IP's indigenous political structure composed only of, how many people? Less than ten. Nine persons composed of chairman, vice-chairman, balian, whatever, as composition of the organization of the indigenous political structure. So how can they say that they have at least one hundred members? No. So I don't want to, uh, uput, uh, to embarrass the previous speaker, but I just want to tell this August body that the Council of Sama was only established after the termination of this four person. So again, uh, we agree to the motion of Honorable Counselor Farida and the whole that this case must be resolved first by the NCIP and we just hope that the NCIP will act on this issue in accordance with law, rules, and policy insofar as the April Law or the Indigenous People Reform Act is concerned. We hope that the law will not be defeated by a personal interest of a member of the IP's, most especially the Office of the Indigenous People Commission because the purpose and intent of the law is to empower the indigenous people. Empowerment is the main purpose of the law. As to the government, they saw that these IP's people were marginalized for a long period of time and that is the purpose of the law. So we hope that personal interest will be set aside both by the indigenous people who aspire for IPMR and those people's money governing assigned in the Office of National Commission. So ma'am, uh, yung petition ma'am, it is not a petition but a resolution. So medyo na ano lang siguro. And once we receive all the documents and we can see that we have grounds to protest as regards this issue, then we will do that.
Honorable Chair.
Yes, honorable.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Since we already have an approved motion, maybe we have to put to an end of these issues today and let the NCIP resolve this matter so that kay kung magpadayon, tingnan ani, tubag bigas, tubag bigas, dilik wala ni kahumanan, magabi ang tagang pakaitag na sa agenda, Honorable Chair.
Lastly, um, I think someone from Samal tribe has something to say before we end this matter.
Wala na, Honorable Chair.
Those, okay, those words, just give us a chance.
Salam alaykum, may hapon sa atong tanan. Ang mga gisulti bito, I am not fluent in English. I can say Chile, but this is the time involved of Samal. Kaning Samal bito, he plans at Masashir, kay kami na. Ilitered in the, silang pare, history of my grandfather supposed to be, how to neglect Samal, I am the one. And as what is the time of my parents here? Ang ancestor ni Farida og kami isa. Supposed to be, he struggle already in NCIP. I don't know another people to intervene, to act what? Kay ang suprin, hibuhat nila, I denied on that. He create itself, that is not true. The rule is tribal to tribal, not involve what kind of organization of that. Hibaan na'to bito, suprimo sa NP, basi suprimo buong salay. Mas minsan, katong buhi basi ayaga anak ko. Kay nga naman, ang invitation po nga, naapek ko sa invitation, tinuyo respeto sa ilaha. Pero kung dilik respeto ng NCIP, kami legally gadarom me within months of year already. An intervention of not truth, telling the lie, even he speaks of rach. In how book bisara, is your word as is true, God knows. Even you speak as thousand word, that is not truth, as a matter of fact. How intervention without any assisting as IPS, ICC? Giingon sa amoa regularly, iban long niya kilakalay. Wala kami nagkilakalay sa atag isa sa tribo. He frustrate, he weak, he buhan, hibaan niya.
Mr. Chair, for consideration.
Stan namu, Samal.
Consideration, Mr. Chair. I would like to, uh, make a statement that we will not end up today discussing this matter. We have, we have already heard the last speaker on having a manifestation on the tribe that he is in, uh, what sir?
That is already explained as much, as a length as much. Dilik sila.
As I said, I said, Mr. Chair. And that, Mr. Chair, can we put off the microphone of the speaker, Mr. Chair?
Hello. Hello, back to order. Ma'am, in behalf sa, sa buhatan, kami siguro mapasalamat diyan ni Hanikadire, and I hope na masap, ma-resolve ninyo na matter, no? Yes?
Um, yes, Your Honor, last word from NCIP. Um, just for a guidance, so this August body for you to decide, um, we reiterate our standard, dependency of a protest. Apendency of a protest should that be made a ground to refuse an IPMR to sit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, especially if that IPMR already have issued with certificate of affirmation. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney. That's, that's the very thing that, uh, we requested your presence over this regular session para matagaan mo paglinaw ba? Okay, hangi man mitanan. Thank you, Attorney.
Madam Sekretary, let's proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Madam Sekretary, let's proceed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, honorable Ramos, you are recognized.
Duga manifestation ba? Kay, kwan manggut, namantoy, NCIP has already issued kuha certificate of affirmation? Oh, I understand that the term of office of Honorable Bual will end July 22. Ang akong kwan ya, ang ako din, kaning opinion, uyiba, kahulat onanato. Ngamoyin ang term ni, ni Honorable Bual? Bakumana na? Pulian na kanan kwan, kanan na, kasi ang buholin niya, kina na buto certificate of affirmation. Pulian na kanang kuwan, kanan na, kanan, kisay mo pulian niya, kina namatay certificate of permission. Kay kini ako problema sa IP, problema sa NCIP. IPMR internal niya, nasilai siparet balau. Espesialo niya siya, kanang kuwan. Espesialo. Look, espesialo will respect their customs and dishonor. Respectuhan ata na. So, kanan na ako, that is my manifestation, manifestation na, ug may mo. Pag atong NCIP, atong, ok, basila nga, uy di ba, delete ang implementation. Na atong.
But anyway, ah, siguro na kuwan na po na to na sila ma-resolve na. After, um, after that, then we take an action. Hama, let's proceed. Madam Secretary, let's proceed.
Item E4, a communication from Adriano Consongji, Chief Commissioner, Secretariat of the National Telecommunication Commission regarding notice of hearing requests for the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to install, operate and maintain a nationwide wide broadband network facilities in the Philippines.
What's the pleasure of the body?
Actually, ilang request ni Sir is just for
Information.
an information nga, ilahang, ikwan ilang notice to install and operate.
For respective committee reports, Mr. Flor.
Committee report.
Respective committee report, Mr. Flor.
Honorable Chair. We are non-committee report.
Excuse me, Sir Chair.
Another committee report.
Sir, ayun, say action taken at the sir, for info or?
For info.
For information, sir. Committee reports na sir.
Yes, Honorable Dampalan, your recognized.
I have a committee report number 153, Committee on Women and Social Services. Subject, Memorandum of Understanding between the Department of Social Welfare and Development represented by Regional Director Fridwan P. Hajimuddin, CSO4, and the Local Government Unit of Ipil, represented by the Local Chief Executive, Anna Melce Oligario, requesting for a resolution to approve the said Memorandum of Understanding. Remarks and recommendation, the supplemental feeding program of the national government through the DSWD is now on its 13th cycle. Were in 2,560 daycare children, 50 Child Development Center and SNP children are beneficiary of the program. This is funded in the amount of 6,451,200 to be implemented for 120 days or 6 months at 21 pesos per day for every child. The General Appropriation Act of 2022 stated that the target outcome indicator of the supplemental feeding program is 80% Yes, yes, yes. Is 80% of the malnourished children in the CDCs and SNP's with improved nutritional status. This Memorandum of Understanding has the same content of the previous SFP 12th cycle with the signatory Regional Director Fridwan P. Hajimuddin, CSO4, for the DSWD. The committee finds the Memorandum of Understanding to be in full form and consonance with the term and condition of the provision of law and the committee hereby recommends for the approval of the said supplemental feeding program Memorandum of Understanding. I move for the adoption of my committee report 153, Honorable Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Farida. Ang pala, any second. Seconded by Honorable Buwan. Nuega, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
I move for a resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor to enter into a Memorandum of Understanding. Ah, I'm sorry, Honorable Chair.
Yes.
I move for a resolution approving the content of the Memorandum of Understanding.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Farida. Any second. Seconded by Honorable Nuega. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
Another resolution, Honorable Chair. Move for a resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor to execute a Memorandum of Understanding between the Department of Social Welfare represented by the Regional Director Fridwan P. Hajimuddin.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Farida. Any second. Seconded by Honorable Buwan. Any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
Ah, another one, Honorable Chair. I have not prepared a committee report on this. This is with regards to the, ah, referral to the committee as to the DBM circular, Memorandum Circular regarding the, ah, assistance to individual crisis for local government of which 10,000 was given as the ceiling for the assistance. Honorable Chair, let us, ah, let it be known that the assistance for, ah, individual in size, in crisis situation, ah, that was, that, that is being given to the indigents, ah, is only a maximum of 5,000. However, we have given the Local Chief Executive the discretion to, ah, to, to, um, to extend assistance beyond 5,000 depending upon the availability of funds, Honorable Chair.
Say that again.
That is for info.
Okay. Thank you. Next.
That is all, Honorable Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Farida. Next, Mr. Flor.
Any more committee report? Still on committee report. Honorable Ramos, committee report. Honorable Nuega, any committee report? Honorable Buwan? Honorable Catalunya? Any committee report? Honorable Turalba?
Um.
Honorable Chair, we're through with the committee report.
For calendar business, Madam Secretary.
This is for the day for second reading. We have here an ordinance instituting life, institution, institutionalizing the school living traditions of the indigenous people in the municipality of Ipin.
May we hear a sponsor, um, from the sponsor, um, from his sponsorship, sponsorship speech of the proposed ordinance before the interpretation?
Honorable Chair, may I ask the proponent of this ordinance on second reading?
Okay. Um, may I ask the, the proponent to move for, um, approval?
Ah, Colonel, ah, I move to, ah, move a second reading for the approval.
Okay. There's a motion passed by Honorable Buwan, any second? Seconded by Honorable Nuega, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved.
Mr. Chair, let this matter be set for this third and final reading on the next regular session.
Okay. That matter will be moved on third and final reading. Um, for other, um, for other matters, Mr. Flor? Can anyone suspend the rules to accommodate other matters? Yes? I can suspend the rules to accommodate other matters.
I'd like to request everybody that porturo we have the public hearing under local revise, local review code, maksud ko tagalasot to mo in telephone. So, I would like to request everybody all the disugunan by members to be present in that particular public hearing. Muna, hangyan ako, ang tanan nga mga members, dikumitan with amendments. Kina nan gi, mutambong giun, bili kay kanang chair morimoto, vice-chairman, kubili kita tanan, may ma. Public hearing, ma.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
At kuwan.
Honorable Turalba.
Ah, bunggo sa COVID code at 8 o'clock in the morning.
Yes, okay. Please take off that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be clarified, ah, from 8 o'clock in the morning until, until afternoon, how about our lunch?
Break na.
Break ta?
Sir?
Mo break ta sir, manghuli ta.
Kanang lunch, muna'y problema na to, karoon. Kay kung dito pa na, ihihilit na to dito sa barangay Duertaway, ah, konsial o Honorable Dante.
Snacks ma'to yang.
Nagvolunteer siya nga, siya ay mo providing snacks. So, karoon kay diriman, usap ang binyo na to. So, atong hangion senior, namaka provide the siyang. Lunch, ma, balan na gualis snacks, basta kay nae, nae perintok.
Di na makaya.
Bili makaya.
Revision, di na makaya.
Okay.
So, right after this, right after this meeting. May, tumay information, si mayor na akong karunya after.
Di liman sir, ah, ang atong participants sa, sa kuwan na sa public hearing, ah, sa morning, the same people in the afternoon?
Lali, yusa na.
Yusa na?
Yusa na.
So, manghuli sila kuwto. Ay mani uto, do you think mamalik sila pagkahapon?
Kanakumbangan nga, problema sila pag five buhay, kumbalik na kapo. Pero sa kung bang ayak ang bayaran ng buhay, ano na mali.
Kay inaniman ang tatong akong suggestion, the other session sir. Start tag 8:30, will end up at 11. But at least manghuli ang mga tao, di liit na maoblige sa ilang lunch, depende. Ah, off, off lang ang kuwan na, off the record lang.
Okay. Back to order.
Honorable Chair.
Yes?
I move, other matters?
Honorable Chair.
Yes, Honorable Farida, your recognized. Ay, sorry, so, sorry for that, um, sorry for that, um, Honorable Farida.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, you have already recognized the Honorable Babong.
Sorry for that.
Honorable Chair, I move that the pertinent papers of Nora Share, Nora Share A Malai, Opuro, Mal, Malai, Opu, Malali, Opuro Greenfield Sanito, APNP applicant, per, be endorsed to the Philippine National Police.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Chong, any second?
Let it be unanimously seconded, Mr. Chair.
Um, seconded, seconded by Honorable Buwan, um, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Any more, any more other matters?
Other matters, Honorable Chair.
Honorable Farida, your recognized. Yes? Who suspended?
I move for a resolution adopting the amended guideline in the preparation of social protection and development report.
Second.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Farida, any second?
Second.
Seconded by Honorable Turalba, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved? No more other matters? Move for adjournment?
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Nuega, ah, yes? Yes?
At this point, Mr. Chair, we will hear the voice of the holder of the motion for adjournment.
Honorable Nuega? There's a motion passed by Honorable Nuega, any second? Second, any second? Seconded by Honorable Dampalan, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion adjourn? The 48th regular session is hereby adjourned.